Welcome to the July 15, 2021 Parma City School District Board of Education Meeting. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Musio.
Mrs. Brodsky.
President.
Mrs. Carpus.
President.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm that this meeting is being currently livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting, and if there's a problem, please speak up immediately so that technical difficulty may be addressed?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Do we have any retirement recognitions?
No, we do not.
Okay. Information to the board?
Yeah, just a few things we wanted to update the board on. First, we are well underway in summer school. Mrs. Stravko and I stopped by the other day, just very impressed by not only the teaching and learning, but also the enrichment activities that we have. And we're just really grateful for the way that we've allocated our ESSR funds to be able to afford these opportunities for free to our students. We have 500 students, K-8 participating, and that's in Shiloh, and then we have another 300 participating in some form in the actual high school, which is more of a credit recovery, kind of a hands-off for us, although there are still learning opportunities as well. So we're excited about that. We're also excited that between last meeting and this meeting, we held our first Byersfield movie night. Unfortunately, the last two weeks, the forecast has required us to cancel, including tonight's is actually canceled. But this is another example of us really trying to open our facilities to our public, trying to make sure that there's always a connection between whether you live, between our residence and our school district, whether you have kids in the schools, had kids in the schools, or never had any kids in the schools. We want to be an asset for you, and so we will have two more Byersfield movie nights throughout July, on the next two Thursdays. So we hope that we will have better weather and that we can host. And that actually concludes my remarks. I had a few others, but I think they're going to be addressed in questions later.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have a presentation this evening on physical science?
We do. We have really been aggressive this year in adopting curriculum with the funding that has been allocated to us from the federal government and also from our permanent improvements in our curriculum budgets. So Mrs. Stravko and Sarah Mett have been in front of you a good number of times this year, and we are proud that they are here one more time to talk about the physical science sequence that they are adopting this evening.
This one will be fast, because you know our process, but recently we adopted our secondary science, and the missing piece was physical science, partly because our teachers were still looking at materials. So if we want to move ahead, our district goals, increase student achievement and improve transparency throughout our communities, you'll see our process follows suit with that, and then practice fiscal responsibility. The cost for this adoption is coming out of our allocated permanent improvement funds. So our last adoption was 2015. It was a 2012 copyright. Our Ohio standards, which we follow for board adopting curriculum, has been revised since then, so there were quite a few gaps within our curriculum. And the need for our digital labs, our simulations, and then the connection to Google Classroom, which we saw this year with our COVID pandemic. Also, anytime we adopt new curriculum, we connect it with our playbook and purposefully authentic literacy strategies, which is read, write, and discuss. So a couple of weeks ago, Amy talked about chemistry, bio, and environmental science, so this completes our secondary science. Our same process, we follow ODE. We look at every report, which lists our approved vendors. We request sample materials based off of feedback from our teacher leaders. We use our rubric. We have a tech review. We have a period of time for public review through our website, and we also have materials in our lobby. And then today is our final recommendation to you for approval. So Amy will talk about the committee and the materials.
All right. So as always, I had a great group of teacher leaders. These were our physical science teachers across our district. They did an excellent job of being very thorough. They're passionate about their content, and they really dug into all the resources available. So the one thing we landed on actually looked very closely to what they currently are using, but the much more updated and innovative version. This is the 2021 Inspired Physical Science with, or from McGraw-Hill. And one of the biggest things that you're going to find as I'm talking through a few of the aspects that they found as positives, is that it really merges not just looking at small areas that should be covered within physical science, but really working to intertwine everything the kids are learning in other courses as well, to really deepen their understanding. So some of the key strengths that we found within this resource is that the McGraw-Hill physical science book had a great deal of ways that teachers can make sure that students understand the science content. So there are evidence-based ways that have been able to provide access for our kids who often struggle with possibly reading that content and understanding the vocabulary or just background knowledge. So this, along with, you know, the many ways that we can instruct with science, this is going to help them have access to that content and succeed. There's also authentic connections and understanding, so real-world application. We want our kids to be able to understand the physical science aspect, especially because it's so closely related to what they're seeing in real world. So you're going to see that there's STEM applications and ways that they can really be curious instead of just being given information. And then, of course, because of the age we're in, technology needed to be something that they consider, and so in this case, you know, digital tools that enhance that science content, as well as simulations and things that give them access to it even when they're not in school. So as always, we have feedback from staff in the community. In this case, they had access to it. We provided staff with demo accounts. They were provided an opportunity for a presentation. We had about 80% that wanted to go for this particular resource. And then our community, as of today, we did not have anyone respond with a question or a comment within our survey. One of the things, as you know, is that we are a big proponent of making sure that we can sustain implementation and future preparation for our teachers. So ongoing webinars, PD will be provided before they even can get their hands on their actual house. They will have live training with a live person. And then obviously, other ways throughout up here in curriculum instruction, we really make sure that we bring the teams together across our district to make sure we're supporting them and that we're aligning ourselves with all the same content and courses. We are doing our six-year adoption, print and digital access for teachers, class sets of student hardbound books, and then the digital access for student books at home, as well as all the ability to do whatever activities they would normally do, it connects to Google Classroom, as well as in this platform, along with professional development. It's going to be $54,033.92, and we're using our permanent improvement funds. And lastly, just to go back to what we always consider as of the highest importance, our goals, we want our kids to have high-quality materials. We want our teachers to feel confident we're providing those for them, and they can take it and run with it. Transparency continues to be what we want to make sure we're ensuring. And then through this fiscal responsibility, because of the constant conversations we have with these companies, we're able to negotiate a really formal partnership so that we're making sure we're staying aligned with our budget and providing the best we can for our teachers. Any questions or comments?
I do. You don't do that at the same time. Do I go first?
I did.
You go first.
That'll be real quick.
I'll say it.
It won't take too long. So it's, you know, science is obviously is my forte, so I'm glad there was an update, because the book that was used when I retired was awful. I think I said that again, but it was, it was bad, bad book. But anyway, so it's good that I had an update, and it's good that I see more hands-on type stuff for those kids to do, because definitely sitting in a classroom preaching at kids and having a irritated accent on teaching. So hands-on is the best, I think. I do like that, and you guys, as usual, did a very thorough job and presented, and I recognize a few of the names off their own list, and I'm sure they did a thorough job as well. Thank you so much for your input.
So I have a comment and then a question. First, I love, as always, as a mom with kids across the multiple ages, the ability to have them leave their text at school, the hard bounds, but bring that home so that we can engage. I can't tell you how many times over the last few years they're like, can't bring the book home, and I'm like, well, I don't understand your notes here, so to have that going forward is really great for the kids, and also for them to be able to reread the content at home for kids that are struggling with that kind of being lectured and need that more kind of hands-on. I noticed with this one, we had zero community impact and input or feedback. Do we know, so for anybody who doesn't know, the parents, community, everybody has an opportunity to comment, read, hold, come pick up, take a look at all of our curriculum before it's adopted, every single piece of it, and it's been done that way for years. Do we know how many, did anybody come in and look at it and didn't put an input? Do we know?
So I have not heard physically from our secretary that anyone came in. Usually, if someone comes in, there is a notice there that they can contact us as well. She's usually good about, you know, letting us know if there are questions. So physically, no, I have not. And in the previous adoptions, we even got like personal emails and things if they were commenting, even beyond just the survey, but this time it's not.
Questions, and so oftentimes, if there aren't any questions, you don't hear anything, unfortunately.
It's still a great practice to have the parent.
Yeah, we put it out there on social media, on the website, and, you know, as families are sitting in here waiting for things, we often see them look at materials as well.
That's excellent. Thank you.
This was the last piece of the puzzle, right, for the science?
We made it.
So all the way through, I mean, and, you know, in another six years, we'll go through it again, but with everybody else here, and as, as you know, the ex-curriculum guy, so glad we're on a rotation, and so glad that, you know, we're not going to have some things that go 15, 20 years before we adopt them again, and that we have a set that, you know, we have a six-year rotation. So once again, a good job, and the whole science thing going back throughout the year, you know, applaud you and the hard work that went into it, and it's, you know, kudos to our kids that are going to be able to benefit from, you know, from everything that we're getting here, so thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you both, and that was the 13th adoption, for those who discord, which is a really, really significant and impressive effort by these ladies and certainly all of the curriculum committees that they worked with. The work really comes from these two, so congratulations and thank you.
And those things don't happen overnight. I mean, that's, every adoption is a lot of work, and 13 in one year, that, well, that's amazing. Congratulations.
Very impressive.
That concludes our remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Smilak. Communications, Mrs. Carpus, anything come to the board?
I don't. I have a question, and I think we can discuss that at the end.
Whatever.
Okay. No, I really don't have anything other than the, I wanted to come in on the title of this work, this time in the Safety Town. It is amazing, and there are the volunteers that have been signing up.
But no.
It's a one-day event. It's March 26, or, I'm sorry, July 26, but for Monday. There's two sessions. We were able to make room for current first graders, right? Is that how it worked out?
Yeah, we're actually going to send an email. If it didn't go out tonight, it's going to go out tomorrow, because we have 400 spots, and I think we came to about 260 incoming kindergarters that are going to participate, so we do have quite a few spots available for incoming first graders as well.
So, and the commitments from the police departments and everything has been fantastic, so if you guys have a chance, sign up to volunteer.
July 26, the afternoon at Greenbrier.
Morning and afternoon, right?
I was just going to add, where is it?
July 26, Greenbrier. Yep.
I would love.
I will send you all the emails to sign up to volunteer. That's all I have.
Every time I say something, Cindy's next words are, "I would love."
That's how many years of community involvement right there?
Considering I have two kindergarten.
John, do you have anything?
I do. Dr. Smilak has talked in the past about our ESSR money, and we're looking for ways to help the community out, and so what we've decided is to not charge fees, school fees for this coming school year, and we're going to move all that, all those fees to the ESSR funds. So to give you some numbers, 2019, we took in about $260,000 in fees, and we spent $392,000. Because it's free-reduced, those kids don't have to pay fees. 2018, we spent $212,000, and, I'm sorry, running $212,000, we spent $411,000. So the expenditures are greater than the revenues every year. So if we don't charge the fees this year and move the expenditures to the, expenditures to ESSR funds, we help the community because they don't have to pay the fees, but we also help the general fund because those costs are now paid out of the ESSR funds, so it's a win-win for the community for us.
And we've been, we've had a surplus in our ESSR funds for?
Well, the second round of ESSR funds is $9.9 million.
Right.
The third round, which we didn't get our money yet, is around $23.3 million.
So this is, this is the federal government relief that came from the American Rescue Act.
Explain what ESSR funds are.
ESSR is Elementary Secondary Emergency Relief Act. So this was all geared toward closing the gaps in learning that occurred. Mrs. Stravko made a very nice presentation, actually, in March about how we intended to pay or use our funding. Part of it was the free summer school that I alluded to. A lot of it will go into programs that we want to be sustainable. We're adding three guidance counselors, one at each high school. We're adding home liaisons, one at each middle school. We're adding board-certified behavioral analysts at elementary schools. So a lot of that really is our acknowledgement that students are going to come back into our schools and classrooms with some emotional needs, and, I mean, COVID was an unprecedented pandemic. We want to make sure that we're able to provide, you know, those supports and resources to them. We also are shrinking our class size at the elementary schools, specifically in the earliest grades, what used to be a 25 to 28, sometimes even a little bit higher than 28 ratio of kindergarten and first graders, should be 20 next year. That's the goal, anyway. It sort of increases from there. So that's, again, there's a range of what you can spend ESSR money on, but we've really tried to gear it toward, you know, right in the classroom, what supports and what personnel are we able to avail to our students. We're also continuing Parma Virtual Learning Academy, which, you know, was obviously something that was born out of a critical need last year, but we still have approximately 200 students that want that format of learning, and so that's an ESSR-funded program as well. And then all of the digital tools that we purchased last year, really, again, to get us through what was kind of a crisis, we'll continue to have those, because the great piece is that our teachers, and again, this was Tiffany and Amy, working so diligently to make sure they have a professional development to implement those into their classrooms, there's use for things like Paradec and Screencastify and EdPuzzle. There's use for those things, even though we're back in brick and mortar for the most part, and so ESSR funding will continue to pay for that as well.
So as a recap, we're going to be saving about $200,000 to $250,000 out of the general fund by making this shift, right?
It's, well, look at the 1918s, anywhere between $130,000 and $200,000.
Okay.
Savings for the general fund.
And a good thing for families.
Yeah, definitely.
Absolutely. We're on that one.
Yes.
And a lot of families are struggling still after going through the pandemic, so, I mean, it'll be helpful to everyone, but for.
Families struggling when there was no pandemic.
Exactly. So this will be even more impactful for those.
Just one other comment before we get too far away from it. 9:00 to 12:30 is session one at Greenbrier for Safety Town, and the second is 1:00 to 4:30, and, you know, anyone of you are welcome to stop by at any point and find a way to have you contribute.
Maybe I'll learn something. Wouldn't doubt it. Any other communications this evening?
That's it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any amendments this evening?
I don't have any.
No amendments? Do you have anybody for public participation on an agenda item?
No.
Not this evening? Okay, we can move. And we move to approval of written record and proceedings, and move to adopt resolution 2021-07-339, approval of the written record and proceedings for the June 24, 2021 regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021-07-329. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Musio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-07-329 has been approved. We now move to curriculum with Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. So I move to adopt resolution 2021-07-330, approval of the adoption of physical science.
Second. Motion second for 2021-07-330. Questions or comments? Mr. Musio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-330 has been approved.
Just making sure I'm ready to go. All right, I moved to adopt resolution 2021-07-331, granting authority to the administration to enter a contract with the family during the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second. Motion second for 2021-07-331. Questions or comments? Mr. Musio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-331.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-07-332, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2021, 2022, and 2022 and 2023 school year.
Second. Motion second for 2021-07-332. Questions or comments? Mr. Musio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-332 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-07-333, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second. Motion second for 2021-07-333. Questions or comments? Mr. Musio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-333 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything else to discuss, this will conclude.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vaughn?
Most welcome.
We now move on to business. Mr. Kreis?
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt resolution 2021-07-334, authorizing purchase of six school buses through Ohio Schools Council Bus Purchasing Program.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-07-334. Questions or comments?
Comments? This is part of the allocation that Mr. Musio has designated our permanent improvement funding, so each year, really, we should be on a six-bus-ish type of schedule, and so we're proud to be back on that. I mean, when we started several years ago, we had buses that were 17 and 18 years old and needed to be off the road, so we've upgraded, but we'll continue to do so at six buses per year, and again, that's all from permanent improvement, and it comes from an allocation of that money that he sets aside specifically for that purpose.
Yeah, thank you. I remember the fleet being extremely old.
Yeah, and then, Dr. Smilak, with these six buses, that will bring up 50 buses we were, we replaced in the last three or four years out of the 106 we have. So almost half the fleet.
50%.
That's awesome.
So that's great.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No, no.
Mr. Musio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-334 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-07-335, authorizing Ohio Schools Council membership and school safety program.
Second.
And motion second for 2021-07-335. Questions or comments?
I could comment on this, too. This is something that makes all the financial sense in the world for us. This is a part of, the Ohio Schools Council is a large consortium of school districts that really helps to set the price of commonly purchased, you know, goods by the school system. So, for instance, at the very last resolution, we don't necessarily have to go do the bidding for all of these school buses. The Ohio Schools Council does that for us, and then we buy it at that price. So your, hopefully, affirmative vote this evening allows us to continue into that practice, and it just allows for efficiency and fiscal responsibility.
It saves us a lot of life work.
Yeah, absolutely. Instead of us calling every school bus company in the world, they've already done that work for us.
What's our membership fee for you?
It's up there with the 358602. Is that the same?
No, safety program is 1715, 13.
And.
And the membership is 1836.
Total, so the total is 358602.
Which is, how do you use the safety statement? Yeah, sure. Better one.
I can see the little thing.
Any other questions? I want to take my two finger. Mr. Musio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-335 has been approved.
Oh, wait. I'm reading. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-07-336, authorizing award of bid for Parma Senior High School structural repairs.
Second.
A motion second for 2021-07-336. Any questions or comments?
We'll move on to the first.
So, okay, we see that one, and then I got a different one. What are repairs?
What are those repairs?
Foundational by the authority.
Yeah, it's the front of the building, I think, in the agenda meeting the other day. Yeah, and they, no, and it is, I'm, well, the building's, you know, not new anymore, and the question I asked was, you know, if that was something that, if we were building new schools, would that still have to be done? And the answer was yes, that it would still have to be done, because, so I just wanted everybody to understand that.
My question is, there's a wild difference between the engineering estimate and the two estimates up there.
This is actually prompting us to have some questions about our engineering firm that's been providing estimates.
Okay. That's kind of what I was looking at, Lee. There's some definite.
This hasn't been the first that's come in, quite a bit below what the engineers originally presented.
But the business office has followed up with the contractor saying, okay, estimate's around $350,000, you did $126,000, you went through everything, can you still do this job for what you did? And it's like, yes.
Do you have, like, an active labor force? Like, can you actually do the work?
I'm making sure they understood exactly what the work was.
So we double-checked everything. Perfect.
Yep.
Perfect. So are we under contract with this engineering firm for an extended period of time? Can we switch?
We're not, yeah. And we are exploring different engineers. Because again, this has happened a few times now where their estimate of what they would think-
Is significantly higher.
A lot of times at the, you know, the authorization meeting in January, you approve different engineering firms. And we can use any of these engineering firms for any project. You know, as long as you have a contract with them for three or four, five years, whatever. So we can have to switch with another one of our approved.
Are we engaged in any other conversations with this particular firm right now?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Good questions. Any others? Okay, Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-07-337 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-07-337, authorizing renewal of lease agreement between Parma Board of Education and Idea Stream WCPN for the use of the Densler Tower.
Second.
And motion is second for 2021-07-337. Questions or comments?
Yeah, just, Mr. Nusio, would you remind us how much revenue we get back for the lease of that tower?
This one, for this deal, it's $4,000, $100,000 a year.
But they also maintain the property in the building, which actually ends up being quite savings to the world.
They're on the edge of the property, too. It's everybody's paper.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-07-337 has been approved. And I believe I said 337 for the previous one as well. That was 2021-07-336.
Oh, that changes my vote?
No.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Price, but great bad guy for finance. Turning the page.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-07-338, authorizing electronic vendor audit system with the Ohio Schools Council.
Second. Motion is second for 2021-07-338. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-07-338 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-07-339, extension of engagement of review of federal Medicare Medicaid reimbursements.
Second. And motion is second for 2021-07-339. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-07-339 has been approved.
I can make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-07-340, approval to enter into a contract with K-12 Business Consulting, Inc. for preparation of the district's five-year financial forecast.
Second. And motion is second for 2021-07-340. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-07-340 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-07-341, approval of the June 2021 financial report.
Second. Motion is second for 2021-07-341. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-07-341 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-07-342, ratification of investments.
Second. And motion is second for 2021-07-342. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-07-342 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-07-343, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second. And motion is second for 2021-07-343. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-07-343 has been appro-
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-07-344, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second. And motion is second for 2021-07-344. Questions or comments?
No, but thanks, Ms. Graves, for your donation to the summer school, Summer Academy. I'm sure that money will be used wisely. So thank you very much. I'm taking it in the Parma State Schools for your donation. Appreciate it.
Good though, hundred dollars. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-07-344 has been appro-
And unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance.
I actually wanted to point something out. In the June forecast, our, when we approved the cash reserve that Jonathan forced a few years ago, we are above the mark. So we, even through all the pandemic and all the ups and downs, we still have, we hit above the milestone, which is the 60 days. So kudos to you.
Add on to the 60 days, about $25.6 million, I think it was. And I think the end of the year, around $28 million in the general fund reserve. In reserve, so that's good.
Yeah, kudos to all involved. I mean, at the time, you know, we're going back to 2018, early 2018, 60-day reserve seemed like something that was so out of reach, it wasn't funny. And it wasn't out of reach. We were able to do it. Congratulations. Anything else? Okay, then, Mrs. Carpus, you're up. On legislation.
Oh, sorry, it's given to human resources. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Smilak because Mrs. Brod and I did not have a chance to thoroughly go through. So we're going to let him handle this today.
Yeah, just a few items that I think are pretty significant for our school district. First, the approval of the budget last week. Actually, I think it's two weeks ago now. Had quite a bit of fanfare and talk about how it had reformed the school funding formula. They call it the Fair School Funding Act. And yes, there's a new formula. And yes, it should, over a long period of time, be more favorable to our school district than the previous. The ultimate goal, if the formula were fully implemented this year, is that we would have $3.9 million in additional state funding coming to our school district. Now, $3.9 million seems significant, but again, don't forget our budget's about $155 million. So it's a pretty small percentage. However, and this is really important for our community to understand, that formula was not fully funded. So while we have this great sort of Cadillac of a plan now, so to speak, we certainly are maybe only getting the hood and part of the front seat to start. We have only $306,000, actually, coming to us in addition next year. The following year, which is the only other budget or only other year that can be allocated in this two-year budget, is another $150,000, taking us to about $450,000 additional. So it's additional funding, but not nearly what it appeared to be and not nearly what it was celebrated to be. So it's just important for folks to understand it because I think a lot of people are going to say, oh, it's a new school funding formula. Everything's fixed, you're never going to need a levy again. Well, on a budget of $160 billion, $300,000 doesn't move the needle. That's 0.2%, not 2%, 0.2%. So it's a little bit of a bait-and-switch game. It's great that we have this new formula. Over time, certainly $3.9 million helps. But that's even if we ever see that money, too. Again, it's only funded at all for the first two years because they, this legislator, this group of legislators can't make decisions about budgets two years from now. That's up to that group of legislators and whoever the governor might be. So that's first. And I don't think we can state that enough and be clear enough about that because, again, the headline says, "School funding is fixed." Well, the promise of school funding is fixed, but the delivery is really a very small pittance of what our budget is. The second is House Bill 244, and this is extremely significant for our school district. We've gotten a lot of information from the CDC. Very recently, the CDC was actually recommending that we treat students differently. So if you're vaccinated, don't worry about wearing a mask. If you're non-vaccinated, keep wearing masks. House Bill 244 came and said, you can't do that. And House Bill 244, as, you know, an actual law in the state of Ohio, is what we're going to have to follow. So regardless of your feelings about masks, the state of Ohio really took it out of our hands anyway. Because they're saying you can't make kids who were non-vaccinated do anything different than you would treat or how you would treat a student who had been vaccinated. We had really effectively said in our June 24th board meeting, we were not planning to use masks anyway. And this certainly affirms our message. But we also had parents that were saying, you should still have masks. So even if we had, you know, sort of started to think about, you know, did we make the wrong decision? Did we make the right decision? The state of Ohio clearly affirmed through House Bill 244 that you can't treat students differently. The frustrating part is, you know, again, mixed messages, right? You have your CDC saying one thing, you have the state of Ohio saying another. I certainly would not be surprised if we had the Cairo County Board of Health saying a third. But, you know, right now, it's that it's the law that we will follow. And that's more important than the guidance we might receive from the Cairo County Board of Health.
Thank you for the explanation, Mrs. Brod.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-07-345, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of certificated appointments, confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of change in certificated assignments for the 2021-2022 school year, confirmation of substitute teacher appointments, approval of certificated non-compensated leaves of absence, acceptance of certificated resignation, confirmation of supplemental appointments. Second.
And motion is second for 2021-07-345. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-07-345 has been appro-
Before we move on, we have an introduction to make as a result of that affirmative vote there. Michael Taylor, if you'd like to introduce yourself just a little bit, maybe your family to us?
My name is Michael Taylor. This is my girlfriend, Jake Kellis. My mother, Candy Taylor, who also works at Parma State Schools. My father, Greg Taylor.
And what are you going to be doing for us?
Working at Valley Forge, teaching PE and health.
I see you're coming in at step four. Let's put you on the spot. So where, you have some experience. Where were you previously?
I left from teaching at Euclid Park. It's a K-3 school in the Culloden Metropolitan School District.
Welcome to Parma.
Thank you very much.
Very happy to have you. Can we have a little Michael here? And I just want to make sure that you guys aren't new teachers by any chance, are you? Okay, all right. I didn't get a chance to talk to you before the meeting started, so.
Quick question for Mr. Taylor. Are you coaching anything currently?
No.
So what would you like to coach?
What was opening someplace for coaching?
What is opening someplace for coaching?
That is true.
They pop up all the time.
Hockey program.
Well, welcome, and thank you very much for coming. It's, it's great to be able to put, you know, some faces and personalities to the names.
And a family, too.
Did you graduate from Parma?
Normandy, 2010.
That's even better.
I didn't have you.
I'm like puzzled now. Boy, the beer doesn't help, so. Right. You're in Normandy, 2010.
Sorry.
No, I didn't have you.
Well, you're back home now, right? Well, across town where you're teaching, but back home in the district.
Happy to be here.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-07-346, acceptance of certificated retirement.
Second.
I motion the second for 2021-07-346. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-346 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-07-347, confirmation of certificated administrative appointment replacement.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-07-347. Comments?
I can comment. Jeff Cook, obviously, I've known Jeff for quite some time. Spent a long distinguished career here in Parma. He has most recently been a PAS coordinator. He has wanted to get back into a school setting, missed sort of that, you know, sort of buzz of a school and missed being part of an administrative team that, you know, was in the trenches every day. Applied for this, and it was unanimous selection of a pretty wide-ranging panel over at Greenbrier. So, he is excited, and they're excited to have Jeff. We then are taking Jeff's position and sort of divvying some of those responsibilities up. We will also have an administrative specialist that we will bring to you shortly. We're interviewing next week, I believe, for that, who will be really more dedicated specifically to curriculum. The PAS position will actually be absorbed by Mrs. Porter, Michelle Porter, who is working in PVLA this year. She did a phenomenal job with PVLA, but certainly it's shrinking for next year. So, she's able to have some additional responsibilities, and we're very confident in the job that she'll do with PAS. And we're excited to be able to add, really at no additional cost, it's really just kind of moving from Jeff Cook's position into the administrative specialist position, excited to add a curriculum expert as well to Mrs. Stravko's team.
Thank you. And yet, I've had conversations with Mr. Cook in the past, and he has missed the building. He was excited to get back, so that's a good thing. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-347 has been approved.
I was glancing at the screen. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-07-348, approval of public school works for a comprehensive automated web-based employee safety and regulatory compliance program.
Second.
I motion the second for 2021-07-348. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-348 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-07-349, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments replacements, approval of classified stipend, confirmation of classified resignation, approval of classified non-compensated lose of absence.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-07-349. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-349 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-07-350, acceptance of classified retirement.
Second.
I motion the second for 2021-07-350. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-350 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-07-351 to amend Resolution 2021-04159, confirmation of classified appointment.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-07-351. Questions or comments?
Please.
What's the other?
So, this one, I believe, goes back to, it was, it was approved in April, but with its employee. And it should, it should have been retroactive to January 1st. But, it was passed in April, and at that time, they didn't say retroactive. So, it was officially, if it weren't, there, somebody, that she, that female, believed that she was going to get paid, but the resolution at that time won't let me go back to January 1st. So, this one's an amended resolution, so we can't pay her. Check it out.
I'm happy.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-351 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-07-352, confirmation of classified appointment.
Second.
Motion second for 2021-07-352. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-07-352 has been approved.
Unless there are any questions or comments from other board members, that concludes Human Resources for this evening. Mr. Schweitzer.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Brod. That brings us to policies. Mrs. Carpus.
Yes, we have a couple of first readings. The first three are all NEOLA recommendations and language changes to update to current language standards. So, it's the first reading of revised policies. Policy 2260, nondiscrimination and access to equal education opportunity. Policy 5517, anti-harassment. And policy 8510, wellness. There's also a first reading of a new policy, 2370.01, blended learning. And that was put in, Mrs. Stravko, do you want to say a few words of why we have that one? And what is the?
Yeah, this is really just the state catching up. Well, NEOLA catching up to the state, adjusting their guidelines for how we're going to count, see hours, so to speak, for students who may opt into like a PVLA. Now, we, we actually, we applied for a pilot program for PVLA, so this actually won't apply to us at this point, but it may at some point, because it's, it's the acceptance of the pilot program that we're going to implement that really is sort of the trump card of these two. Obviously, it's good to have, and it's a NEOLA recommendation.
I love that that's another opportunity for PCSD to shine, being a pilot program for this.
So, blended really means combination of brick and mortar and online. That's, that's what we're talking about.
Correct.
Figuring out the equal signs in there somewhere.
Yeah, and, and also, it talks about student-to-teacher, teacher ratio as well. I mean, I think, I think the concern was, as school district started to implement blended learning or online learning, that all of a sudden, you might have a situation where you're getting 250 kids to a teacher, and that's, it's not what it's meant to be, and that's what the policy sort of aligns to.
Okay, any other questions? We'll vote on that at the next one. Correct. The next, the next thing on my, in here, and let me ask you a question about this, about the OSBA conference. We need to decide if we'll be attending the OSBA capital conference this year. I need to appoint a delegate for the annual business meeting. Conference is November 7th tonight, and the business meeting is November 8th at 2:30.
It is okay. I would like to be the delegate. I was always the alternate delegate preparing. So, I would, yes, so I would like to, because I've kind of shifted into some of the OSBA stuff. So, that's okay with everybody.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with that. Anybody else?
Which one?
Amanda is the delegate. Drop that hot potato right near me.
Listen, you know that's my jam. I love that kind of stuff.
And I would be happy to be the alternate if, if it rolls. I have attended that in the past and enjoyed it as well.
Do we have to say who's attending?
No. I'm attending.
Going, Bobby, this way.
All five. We'll make sure we get receipts, Sean.
We missed it last year because of the pandemic, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of good stuff going on there that the school board members can kind of take away and bring back. Good thing to be at.
Absolutely.
I have a question for our board members. We have a board meeting scheduled for Thursday, October 14. We also have a, I have a conflict. I wanted to know if we could change that board meeting.
October 14?
Yep, it's a Thursday. The varsity schedule just came out.
We'll, we'll work with Pam.
Okay.
And then, you know, get all the announcements out to the public and all that kind of stuff. That October, I mean, it's three months away. We should be able to, we should be able to.
To make a shift there?
I will think. October 14th, when is any OEA weekend? Is that around there?
It's the Friday before. I believe, isn't it, Sean?
I don't know. I thought maybe it was the 15th.
I think 12. It's still calendar.
Never mind.
It's the 8th. Yeah, it's, it's the 8th.
The 8th?
I think that Friday.
Any OEA weekend, yeah.
Just a question. Any other information requested by board members this evening? Now, it's time to have an opportunity to have questions or concerns right into the record. And I believe we have one right here. These are things that, you know, the public would like right into the record that were not part of the agenda this evening. So, this is where the public can be heard. I will read this verbatim. If I mess up the name, please forgive me. It's written here, but Ed Acicella?
Correct.
That did good?
Look us up.
Thank you. I will read, there's, there's two, two sets here. I will read part A and then part B. If we can answer these questions this evening, we will. If we cannot, we will find the answer for you within the timeframe of our, of our policies. Hopefully, we can tonight. First, thank you in advance for answering my June meeting question. Are any students being taught or going to be taught critical race theory or any version of CRT? Are teachers going to get instruction to teach some sort of critical race theory? Second part of this is how can parents and grandparents follow the teaching practices and methods? How can parents and others view the texts and materials used in this educational practice? There's, there's another part to it. Want me to read them all and then?
No, let's go one by one.
Okay.
So, first, no, we don't engage in critical race theory in any way, not in any, not in any curriculum, not in any lessons, not in any professional development. We do not teach it. We have no plans to teach it. It is not a state-adopted standard at this point from a curriculum standpoint. There would be no need for us to, to implement it nor any desire. Any type of curricular change, as you saw tonight, is presented to the board. If we were to introduce some type of new resource, it would be a very public process, very public proceeding. But, again, there's nothing implemented currently, and there's no plans to implement it. And we are all receiving many questions. Actually, not many different questions, the same question. And we're all answering it very consistently in that we don't have critical race theory in our curriculum and have no plans to introduce it.
And the second part of that question dealt with, it may, you know, I think, you know, Tiffany may be able to do it, and that is, how can we follow the teaching, teaching practices and methods? And even maybe more importantly, how can we view the texts and materials used in the educational practice? I think you mentioned that a little bit before, but I don't think we hide anything from anybody.
Anyone who would want to make an appointment with our curriculum department, with the principal, with the teacher, we'd be happy to do that and go through resources. It's all very transparent. You saw tonight that we have a very transparent curriculum adoption process. You also saw tonight that that's almost never participated in or very rarely participated in. Potentially, you know, this critical race theory controversy that clearly exists right now may cue people up, people into to more closely follow curriculum adoptions. But, it's a very transparent process. Anything that we're adopting is, is up for public review ahead of time. And anything that we've already adopted, feel free. I mean, if you want to come in and look at a 10th grade government book or a 9th grade social studies book or an 8th grade, we, we will sit down, we'll go through the syllabus, we'll go through scope and sequence. We have curriculum documents that these, Mrs. Stravko and Mrs. Ermert have worked tirelessly at, at making sure are aligned. And we're, we're happy to show those to anybody who would want to make an appointment to do so. You, you can call a principal, and the principal may want to do it themselves. The principal may call Mrs. Stravko and Mrs. Ermert, and, and they may do it here. Depends on essentially the expert level of, you know, the principal, is that they're comfortable with that? But, yeah, yeah.
Additionally, they can also watch, I guess, board meetings to see the complete presentations on every curriculum that we've adopted.
Sure. Do you do that, too?
If I'm not mistaken.
I was wondering if there were ones on your website, all of them.
If there are, let them sign that.
Yeah, if all of your amendments are on your website that you've adopted, like more in detail of what you're adopting, that all of them are on your website.
And Mrs. Barac, you can probably speak best to that.
Yes, after every presentation, a presentation is uploaded into Word DAX, so it's there since 2013. All of our board meetings, 10 minutes. Does it go with a more detail than what was shown in here?
No, you would have to set up an appointment with one of these two ladies to go through a, a scope and sequence.
If I'm not mistaken, I think our course guide is on our website, correct? If anybody wants to get on there and, you know, read every course that's offered here and the description of what's in there and, you know, what's being taught in there, that's open to everybody. It's, it's right on the website. So, that might answer some questions also. All right, next one. With the upcoming stimulus, and maybe Sean may want to be in on this, I don't know. With the upcoming stimulus cash arriving, are you going to inquire from parents and community members for input? Who will, who will do the response evaluations for decisions on input spending? And how will the respondents be selected?
So, we were required to, to really finalize the application for our SIR funds. We were required on June 24th to present that, and we did that here. We posted that on our website at the same time. At, at the time, honestly, the most controversial piece in that was, are we going to require masks or not? So, we talked about that. But then beyond that, in that application or, you know, template that we had to submit to ODE, we also talked about the review process and the process for input. So, every six months, we, we wrote in that we would present to the board. It'll be an agenda item. The materials are released, you know, ahead of time that people can see. So, if anyone would, would want to provide input to the board and thus, you know, to the entire district, you would do so at that board meeting, since it's already a public forum that's established. We haven't received that SIR III funding yet, as Mr. Nusio said. The spending that we've really allocated has been more SIR II. But, again, the, the allocations that we have, and I spoke, I think, at length about the forward counselors, the whole liaisons, digital tools, et cetera. Those are ongoing commitments. And, and anything that would change from that, we would present at a board meeting, and the public would have any opportunity for input that they wanted to provide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your questions. Any else? I think we're good. Okay. With that, then I move to adopt Resolution 2021-07-354 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
I have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2021-07-354. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-07-354 has been approved. This meeting is adjourned.